Okay, welcome everyone to the January 17th Planning Board Meeting. Tonight on the agenda, we are going to review site visit minutes from last week for 15 Lakeview Drive, and then minutes from the January 3rd Planning Board Meeting. We have a special permit for 15 Lakeview Drive, and we are going to continue our discussion of the Lake and Pond Overlay District Bylaw. And when we get to that point, I will introduce David Cameron, who is here in the audience. So the first item, site visit minutes, I actually have a correction. Those are my own minutes, and so I think I get to make a correction. Helical piers should be spelled H-E-L-I-C-A-L, piers, P-I-E-R-S. Yes. So does anybody else have any input on the site visit minutes? It was pretty cut and dried. We went, we saw, we heard, and we left. Eight minutes.
I'm sorry, but since I wasn't here.
Yeah.
I watched the Concom minutes. And I did talk about it with someone else, who told me, as a contractor, that a patio is not part of a building, but the deck.
So Nancy, we're just reviewing minutes. Well, we're not-
It said you approved it.
No.
We're just reviewing the site visit minutes.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
Okay.
We haven't gotten to the request yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I move.
I have a second.
All in favor? Aye, Kate.
Aye.
Oh. Aye, Gary.
Aye, Liz.
Aye.
Marie. Nancy wasn't there, so you-
And I can't vote.
Can abstain.
Abstain. Nancy abstain.
And Carl?
Oh, I wasn't there either. I'll abstain.
You can abstain. Great. Okay, the next set of minutes is from the January 3rd meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
That's your question.
I'd, having seen those minutes, I'd vote to approve the minutes suspended.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Is this where I would have a question?
This is for-
No.
No. This is just minutes.
This is for the site visit.
Oh, okay. Okay, do I have a motion and a second? Aye, Kate.
Abstain.
Aye, Liz.
Aye, Gary abstain.
Aye, Liz.
Nancy, did you-
Nancy abstain.
Okay. Carl?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, so next up, we have a special permit, and Wayne is not here. So let's see. Jen, do you have the legal notice? No? All right, so we will- You got it?
Yep.
All right, you want me to read it?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, so this is a public hearing, so I will start by reading the legal notice. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Board, acting as a special permit granting authority, is scheduling a public hearing at Stockbridge Town Offices in Baya Remote for 6:30 PM on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, to consider the application of Scott and Mary Ann Goodell at 15 Lakeview Drive to build a deck under Section 6.5 of the zoning bylaws. The application is in the clerk's office. Thank you. All right, next, let's see. I move that we open the hearing to consider the application of Mary Ann and Scott Goodell for property located at 15 Lakeview Drive. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye, Kate.
Aye, Gary.
Aye, Liz.
Aye, Marie.
Aye, Nancy.
Aye, Carl.
Okay, the following procedures will be followed. Testimony will be limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter. Only one person will be permitted to speak at a time. All discussion will go through the chair. All parties will conduct themselves civilly. Arguments between parties will not be permitted. For each person who testifies, please identify yourselves by stating your name and address for the record. So, so is Rob here?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, Rob, did you want to present your request?
Absolutely. So just to reiterate what's already been mentioned, this is a special permit under the LPOD section of the town of Stockbridge bylaws. I think most people attended the site visit, but let me just a quick refresher is, the property is non-conforming in a couple aspects. It's undersized in terms of acreage, it's in the R2 zone, and the existing structure exceeds the current building setbacks, and we are certainly well within the LPOD overlay. The proposal is to construct a deck that would extend 10 feet easterly closer to Stockbridge Bowl, and then also run the length of the existing building. The deck would be no greater non-conforming, as it wouldn't extend any further into the setbacks than the current deck and the current building, and as you mentioned, the proposed construction method is on helical piers, minimizing impact onto the ground. The deck is open-air deck, meaning it has no roof, and we have walked this property with the Conservation Commission, had one initial meeting with the Conservation Commission, and have since met with the Board of Selectmen and gained the approval from the Board of Selectmen's special permitting process. That is, it's really that simple, but I'm happy to sort of drill down. Yes, the deck is a structure. I know the Conservation Commission has some concerns, and we have discussed some approaches to address the concerns with the Conservation Commission, and I can essentially reiterate what those may be, or what we're intending to propose at our next meeting. There were some concerns about, I guess, the stratification of rainwater that would make its way through the voids on the deck, causing small erosion on the underlying soil. Our intention is to place three-quarter inch stone underneath all of the deck, which would act essentially as mini-energy dissipators, and would not allow for any erosion, but also would still allow for rainwater to naturally percolate into the soil. We're not intending any changes to the site. We're going to keep the cottage as it is. We will renovate the cottage, but it stays in the same footprint, stays in its same capacity. I think the Commission would like us to take advantage of the opportunity of a change of ownership, and address some pre-existing drainage issues, which we will do, and we also said we'd be happy to plant some trees to fill in some voids that were created during the construction or the drilling of the well. So happy to answer any questions that the Planning Board may have with regards to our permit in front of you this evening.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Next, questions from the board, one at a time. No deliberations, please, amongst board members. That comes later. So Nancy, I think you have a question.
I had a couple of questions. First, did you get a building permit for that deck?
Not yet. We need to gain permission from all the entities prior to getting the building permit. So once we have permission, let me put it more clearly. Once we have, once we gain all the necessary approvals, which in Stockbridge, in this particular instance, is Conservation Commission, is Planning Board approval, and Board of Selectmen approval, once those are in hand, we'll then file for the building permit.
The deck constitutes a change to the building's structure itself.
So Nancy, this is, we're just in the question period for the applicants?
That's what I'm trying to get straight, is if you put a deck on, then it changes the house. If you're just wanting to put in the, I forget what you call them, the-
Piers?
Not the piers, but the-
The imperium.
Yeah, the structures to hold up the deck. That's different than just putting in a patio, which was approved, and an original special permit.
It is different, and I would actually make the argument that the impact that we're proposing is significantly less impactful than what you've already approved.
But you're, now you're impacting the building, when your original request was just for a patio on the building, correct?
To be clear, my client, Scott and Mary Ann Goodell, purchased the property from Ms. Dina Cola, and the prior application that was approved, and site plan that was approved from Ms. Dina Cola, we are amending that. So she wanted to do the terrace and actually tear down the building and construct a new building. We're simply asking, keep the building and add a very modest deck. But we are adding a structure. I want to be clear, but I'm not sure I understand the intent of the question.
Well, if you're not impacting the, the structure is going farther into the LPOD, you're coming closer to the lake, right? The building will be closer to the lake, because the deck would be considered part of the building, so the building is going closer to the lake, correct?
The structure is going closer to the lake, correct. However, the impact that was permitted previously, grading, soil moving, et cetera, was closer to the lake than what we're proposing at this point.
Guess I don't, because the drainage will come off of the deck now, correct? Go into the lake.
The drainage will follow the same pattern that it's following currently, meaning, you have a watershed in the roof, so our roof is actually the same roof that's been there. That water will come down. Currently, it's falling to the ground, causing a rill along, or better known as a drip line, along that eastern edge of the building. You're right, we are adding a deck. That deck will then serve to work as an energy dissipator, meaning that water no longer falls directly to the ground, causing erosion. It will fall onto the deck, and now what was once, and all the rainwater that used to fall directly to the ground will hit the deck. Underneath the deck is a better three-quarter inch stone, which will allow that water to fall, stay in its place, not disturb soil, and continue to percolate down in the manner that it does currently.
So the water won't, I'm sorry, so the water won't roll off the deck, and then in a drip line off the deck, correct?
Correct. But I want to be clear, I mean, there's going to be some small amount of drippage that would come off the edge of the boards, yes, but all that rainwater will go through the voids. Everybody has a deck, I'm assuming. So all the voids that are on the, that are between the boards, you know, those voids will allow water to move through. You don't build decks so the boards are tight together, because you don't want the water to stay in the deck, you want it to move through. It's not a porch, it's a deck. As long as-
I'm sorry. I guess my concern is that you were originally asking for a patio, and now you're asking for a structure to be added onto the home. That's my concern.
Yeah, I guess, I guess from my opinion, I thought-
Excuse me? Excuse me? I'm sorry, Rob. So Nancy, if you've got the answer to your question, that's great, let's keep going. We can, once we close the public hearing, then we can have that discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so as long as, do you feel you've gotten the answer to your question?
I heard his answer.
Okay, perfect. Does anybody, anyone else have a question?
I do.
Okay, who was first? I don't know.
This is John Hart from Rattlesnake Mountain.
Okay, John, this is just the board right now? So we'll get to the audience, so right now, this is the board, okay?
I don't want you to close the hearing before you hear what I have to say.
Okay, but first, please let the board, you know, this is a legal process, please let the board ask questions, and then I'll get to the audience, okay?
Just want to ask about deed restriction.
Okay. Marie?
Does the concern that the Concom had impact, impact our decision? I mean, if in fact, if in fact it's supposed to be a patio, and that was the concern of the Concom-
Is this a question for Rob, or is-
It's for Rob.
Okay.
Is this, well, it's for, you know, it's, I'd like an answer by somebody. Does that impact the fact that if it turns out it's supposed to be a patio, should we be even discussing this? Or should we wait until the Concom makes their decision as to whether this can happen? Am I not correct?
So we have a couple, we have an option, which would be to continue the public hearing. Okay, so that is a possible option.
Mm-hmm. I understand, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was sort of, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So any other questions?
I have another question, and I-
Okay.
Tell me if it's not apropos here. I was concerned with the soil that was coming from the road in front of the building, washing-
Under.
Right now. There were no, there was no silt fence, there was no hay, there was nothing holding that soil from washing down around and under the building as it is now. It just seemed like there should be something keeping that soil from washing downhill.
Rob?
I mean, that was all loose soil coming off of the road.
Rob?
Yeah, we can certainly put some sedimentation and erosion controls in place. I guess the, I guess the intent, you know, was that the ground would be frozen, which is why they, you know, there are sedimentation and erosion control measures in place between the building and the lake, but if the Planning Board wants SNE control along the driveway, I guess we can try to make that happen.
I was under the impression that silt fences, or hay bales, or wattles, or something, was supposed to happen whenever there was a pile of loose dirt, and it's winter.
I do not have a question.
Gary?
Rob, I would consider the deck more non-conforming, just because it's a structure, added to the structure, versus the patio. Can you maybe tell me why I shouldn't think that way?
Yeah, absolutely, Gary. So your bylaw, and most bylaws read that you're allowed to alter, reconfigure, and add, provided that the extension is no more non-conforming than the existing. What that translates into is that, you know, you can't, you can't go crazy and go outside, you know, we've met, the deck is at the same building edge, so it's, it doesn't extend farther than the building does, and the eastern portion of the deck stays within the rear setback. So with regards to setbacks, it's considered to be no more non-conforming from a zoning perspective. From any other perspective, which is, you know, terrace patio versus, versus structure, I don't think it's germane, to be honest with you.
Do you have a, do you have a draw, because it seemed to me like when we were there, the deck on the side was flush with the side of the house, and then everything was being built out.
It is. So can you see my screen?
Not yet.
It's black.
It says you're trying to share.
It says, my screen says I'm sharing.
Well-
Well, you are. It's black.
Knock, can you knock?
I'm seeing it.
You are?
Yeah.
You're the only one.
Well, I have a plan here that I-
We happen to have one.
I can see it. Anita, I can see it.
Yeah, well, we can't, but we have paper.
Oh.
I'll tell you about it.
Rob, you can maybe stop your share and come back. And then, we have a copy, a paper copy here, so maybe you can walk through.
Yeah, I don't remember, but I just know that-
When you're done with this question, I'd be interested to know-
So this is new, and this is all new. So it is, it's all new.
The select, what, the select board they approved, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right.
What was that? Select board did it approve?
I'll get to that. Let's finish this.
Well, Rob, it just appears to me that that's all new, from what I can see. The 10, the 10 feet across is all new.
It is new.
Okay.
There's no doubt about it. We're coming out, there's no doubt about it. We're coming out from the edge of the existing cottage, 10 feet to the east, which is closer to the lake. It's a new, it's a new deck.
Okay.
We can't remember with the old patio that was reviewed before. How big was that?
It wasn't my, it wasn't my client, it wasn't my application. My clients have purchased the property from Ms.-
Okay.
She permitted it, I don't know. I look, I have a copy of their drawing here.
Yeah.
And I can look at it, but I can't tell you exactly what you folks permitted, I wasn't part of the process.
Right.
I can tell you that, I don't want to beat this too hard, but what we're proposing is far less impactful than what you've permitted.
So, Rob, I have a question. So my understanding is that the select board reviewed this last week-
Yes, ma'am.
And they put a condition-
Yes.
On their request, and can you just, you know, tell us what that condition was?
Yeah, so there's been a concern by, by the Conservation Committee and by the Board of Selectmen, and kudos to the Board of Selectmen for doing, you know, doing the home. They reviewed this with town council, and town council's referenced the section of the bylaw that says, we can, they put a condition on this that says, the deck can no longer, cannot be converted into an extension of the building, which my clients are perfectly comfortable with. So any concerns associated with this deck becoming, at some point in time, an enclosed conditioned living space, essentially been nullified.
Okay, so just, any more questions? You can ask again? Um, Carl, oh, Carl, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I'm hearing all this, but I don't have any particular questions. It seems quite clearly presented.
Okay. Nancy? Who's, oh, yeah, we'll get to you. I just want to make sure the board is all set with their questions. Nancy, are you all set with your questions?
Oh, for him, yeah.
Yeah. Marie, Liz, Gary, okay. All right, now, do we have any, any, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition?
I would just like to know if there's been a deed restriction put on the property that the deck will not become part of the house.
We just talked about-
We just covered that, John?
I know you just covered it, but I didn't hear the word deed restriction.
But Rob, can you answer that question, please?
There has not been a deed restriction placed on the house. The Board of Selectmen and town council felt that a reference to the section of the bylaw was more than adequate and protected everyone, that this would not be converted into living quarters.
Point taken.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding, Rob, a deed restriction has been placed on the deck?
No, it hasn't been placed on the deck. A condition, a condition to the permit is in place from the Board of Selectmen, and approved, language approved by town council.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Can I speak for a moment?
Yes, this is John Hart.
Yes, this is John Hart. This seems like Mr. Ackroyd is playing the Concom against Planning Board, against the Select Board, and it seems like a rotating circle that's been going on in town for quite a while. I am done.
Okay, thank you, John. Anyone else in the audience? Is that it? Okay. Okay, next up, I am going to move that we, we can close the public hearing, or we can keep it open. And I'm not quite sure where this board is at, in terms of wanting to gather more information. So I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing, and if you don't want the public hearing closed, then you don't second the motion. And we can continue it to gather more information.
Kate, do you feel that, that we need to know whether this is correct or not? Do you think we need more information? Or do you think we know that putting on a deck is okay if there's other, if the patio was what was supposed to happen? I mean, do we know that's okay? Or do we need to find that out first? I don't know.
Or do they need a whole new special permit?
Or do they need to do something different? I mean, it felt like-
I personally feel that the process has, is working here. The Select Board has reviewed it, and they've put a condition on that deck, and the Concom is in the process of reviewing it, and we can continue the public hearing. If you feel that we need more information, then, you know, we can continue. If you want to make a motion to continue the public hearing, anybody can do that.
Well, as I said before, I think that, I mean, the information's been laid out quite clearly. You know, I have my own thoughts about this project, but, but, you know, I don't, I don't know that I have any further questions. What was hearing level?
Do we do a straw poll, where we sit?
Yep, I think we could do that. Okay, straw poll.
I have the straws in my hotel room.
Straw poll in terms of who would like to keep the public hearing open?
Oh, okay. That wasn't really what I was going for. I was going for whether we were leaning towards approving or not approving.
Can I, I'm sorry, it's Anita Schwerner. I have my hand up. Can I still inter-
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to say, since, as you guys brought up, you've heard it, Select Board's heard it, Concom's heard it, I would think it might be good to continue, and just everybody get together and talk about it before you decide. I'm not sure what I think, and I'm in the LPOD district, so thank you. This is a good discussion.
Thank you, Anita.
You're welcome.
Kate, I have to say, I have no objection to putting on a deck. If that is legally approved and it's okay, compared to what the Concom was saying about it not-
Okay.
It's supposed to be a patio. I mean, I have no problem with the deck, and I would-
I think what I'm hearing from you-
I want it to be correct.
Right. Sorry I interrupted, but I think what I'm hearing from folks is that you want to hear the Concom's recommendation before we move forward with this. Am I correct?
I want to be, yeah, I want to be sure that it's okay to do.
All right, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye, Kate?
Aye, Gary.
Aye, Liz.
Aye, Marie.
Aye, Nancy.
Okay. That's it. We'll continue the public hearing to the next Planning Board Meeting, and I will talk to town council, and we'll see if we can get some information from the Concom. Rob?
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so next up, we have David Cameron here, and I'm going to introduce David. Let's see, so at the last meeting, we talked about the Lake and Pond Overlay District Bylaw, and as discussed, I did contact David, yeah, come on up, David, pull up your chair. I contacted David about coming tonight, and we talked a little bit about what David could do, and David told me that he could assist the board with practical implementation, which would include the technical aspects of the LPOD, things like soil, stormwater runoff, groundwater recharge, ecology, and so on. He could, that could include attending site visits and public meetings, and providing written comments regarding applications. David is the founder and principal of Fleetwood Environmental Solutions. He has a professional wetlands, he's a professional wetland scientist, and a certified wildlife biologist, and he is the former DEP Western Mass Division Chief overseeing circuit riders in Western Mass. And I don't think, I bet you don't remember, but I actually interviewed you in 2020.
With me?
I interviewed, yeah. Interviewed you over the phone.
Oh.
It was part of a project I was working on for my master's degree, so.
I knew his name was familiar.
Yeah.
2020?
Yeah, yeah.
What was it about?
I was doing a project on the implementation of green infrastructure in Massachusetts.
Okay.
And as part of that, I really needed to understand how the DEP worked, because it's, in some ways, you know, for a board member, it's not always intuitive, because, and I guess it's because you have both the oversight, but then you also have the adjudicary part of it, and sometimes that means that it's not like you can just contact the DEP and get the information. And sometimes that means that it's not like you can just contact the DP, DEP and get the information you want on a project. Is that, is that, do I have that right?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think I understand the way you're characterizing it, yeah. It's difficult to, um, when you're in that position, it's difficult to, um, you can give your interpretation for what a regulatory provision means. But, um, what, what often happens is, um, local officials want to know the answer.
Yeah.
For a very specific project that you've not gotten into the weeds on. And, um, that's really a local decision. And if that decision doesn't go the way somebody, uh, wants, then they have the ability to appeal. And so, in that position, you have to be very, very objective, um, because you may end up getting involved in, in the appeal. And then it could turn into an adjudicatory process, which is the next level above that.
Right, so, all right, so, um, thank you. And so David's here to, you know, why don't you tell us a little bit about, um, your, you know, what you can do, or, you know, whatever you have, have in mind to talk about today.
Okay. Well, I did review the LPOD provisions. And I'm happy to give you some generic comments if you, if you want. I think in a lot of places, they're very specific in black and white, and that helps, that always helps when it comes to regulations. I think in other areas, there's a lot of room for, for subjectivity. And that can be a good thing, or it could be a terrible thing, depending on how it's implemented. I think the stuff that's in this that I might be able to revise some benefit on would be, elements related to natural resource enhancement. Enhancement is one of the principal missions of this LPOD.
Right.
Natural resource enhancement, um, within this 150-foot, really a kind of 150-foot buffer zone around these different water bodies. So I have a lot of experience with natural resource and ecological restoration.
Mm-hmm.
And my, um, one of my general observations after working on thousands and thousands of project sites over, over 30 years is that, when it comes to making decisions about things, applicants and issuing authorities often get way too wrapped up, deliberating over what I, as an ecologist, might seem, might, might construed to be a trivial issue.
Mm-hmm.
And I like to look at things from 30,000 feet and go, okay, Party A wants to do this. Party B is reluctant to give Party A permission to do this because of all sorts of potential reasons. But what if we could do this? What if this process is the only opportunity to do all sorts of good things on this property and leave it better than it is right now, with costs that are completely reasonable to the applicant?
Mm-hmm.
But just requires a little bit of kind of novel, novel approach, uh, and a different paradigm from the issuing authority.
Mm-hmm.
And do it all within the, within the, the standards, within the regulatory standards. That's, that may be, I'm not sure if I'm explaining myself well, but that's how I generally look at every single project. What does Party A want, what does Party A want to do? Why is Party B reluctant to provide permission? And what can we do so that everybody wins?
Yeah.
Everybody wins.
Yeah.
The A, Party B, the environment, the soil, whatever, you know, whatever the critical, you know, natural elements are. So this bylaw section pertains to all sorts of stuff that I've got some experience with, some more than others. Lots of experience with wildlife habitat evaluations, restoration, enhancement. Of course, identification of wetlands and waterways. I know way more about docks and dock construction, public access to waterways and, explain. Um, soils, forestry, silviculture, horticulture, waterfront development generally. I have a lot of experience getting, doing real detailed, deep dives when it comes to stormwater management. And a lot of experience, um, in triage on huge construction sites, figuring out how to fix problems immediately. Um, I've done a lot of that. I don't have modeling experience. I can't do pollutant loading models. I don't have the software to do HydroCAD. I'm not actually an engineer. I'm not a professional engineer. But I was in a, in a role where I had to review some of the most complex stormwater filings that you would ever see. You'd probably never see half the things that I saw that were extremely complicated. So I'm not gun-shy about taking a stormwater report that's this thick and just diving in and doing it. What else do I have here for notes?
I mean, I think stormwater is the big issue around the lake. Um, that's what we're really, I mean.
Well, why don't you, could you tell me a little bit more about that? I want to, I want to know what, what the, the board's perspective on, is on.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'll open it up to the board if you want, I can start. I want to speak for, you know, a seven-member board. Um, from my standpoint, um, we've had a couple of cyanobacteria outbreaks. So, you know, the lake has been, you know, sort of semi-closed down for, for swimming. Um, I think it's been twice, but I'd have to check with the board health on that. And, um, you know, and I just, I know from, um, from my studies that you can really, you know, using, um, nature plantings and nature-based solutions, that you can do a lot to mitigate the impact of stormwater runoff. And I feel like the lake is actually, already has a pretty good base in terms of, um, the woodlands and, and so on. And especially in the north, the northern part of the lake and certain parts of the lakes. But we are seeing, you know, a tendency, you know, we get people from, from urban areas and, you know, maybe they live in apartments or condos, and they're just not really, they love the look and feel of Stockbridge. But they might not have the knowledge base to understand why, um, doing things a little differently in terms of plantings and so on is, is going to save us money in the long run, in addition to being, you know, better for the health of the lake. So I've spoken too long, so I'll open it up to others. Anyone, anyone else want to answer that?
I thought that was beautifully said. I don't, I don't know enough about it. I think I'm the newest one on this board, so.
I, I, I just want to go back and repeat the point I made last, at our last meeting, which is, you know, that, uh, we've inherited these very, very small lots surrounding the bowl. And I feel like, you know, uh, that is, uh, you know, I mean, it's an ongoing problem. It's difficult to manage. And, um, it puts us into non-conforming situations repeatedly. And, and, and yet, you know, the popularity of these sites is such that, you know, the, 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 the houses tend to, uh, to, 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 you know, just to incrementally grow. I mean, uh, uh, and, and, and I, I'm, 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 I mean, you know, they're, 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 the, the, the envelope is getting maximized in every way possible. Um, and that, to me, is my big concern about the LPOD. Um, and I think, of course, that comes right into the health of the lake and, 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 and what runs off into it.
May I ask a follow-up question to that?
Sure.
So you said that your concern is that the, I, if I understood correctly, that the foot, the allowable footprint is maximized or something like that, a lot of these projects?
Repeatedly, yes.
So when you say that, are you referring to this, the, the standards have, there's, um, there's a provision that talks about a certain percentage of property can be developed in certain ways. It's, it's a little bit more complicated than that. Is, does the board find itself in positions where they're allowing more than, than that?
We just tabled one. I mean, that's, yeah.
Well, I guess one of them, and that's actually, I have a whole bunch of questions.
Yeah, so.
I won't get into that.
Just did, that's like a classic example where, I guess I'm a little off-topic, but where it would have been helpful if we had, you know, the input that you'll be giving the Concom, um, you know, before we heard this. So.
So is, is that, that one that you just heard is another one where, it, it seems to me that the way this thing is written in terms of those thresholds for development is though you're talking about a virgin lot that's never been disturbed.
Right, I'm sorry?
You're talking about a raw piece of land that's never been disturbed, right? When you say only 15%, say 15% of it can be.
Yeah.
Now.
Well, but it's also got, you know, it also addresses, um, you know, the current footprint, the bylaw does.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think that, um, the issue of density, I think, is, is different. I, I hear you, Carl, but I think the issue of, of density and, um, coverage is a little different from what we want, would want from you.
That's okay.
Does that, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, and it's comforting, too.
Um.
I, I did want to understand what Carl was saying.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's something that, um, you know, what I'm thinking of is that we could use your expertise to provide a review from a conservation standpoint of a request. And concurrently, and we have, we do have funding for consultants. Um, concurrently, the board, um, can work on the part, the density and the part of the bylaw that just isn't working from that standpoint. So what I was thinking was that, okay, um, we no longer have Cara. We had a, a planner who was helping us out. She took a job. So what we could do is use your expertise to provide feedback on, you know, and I, I really hope there's a way to do this such that, we just had a property that the Concom is reviewing at the same time. And I, I hope there's a way to do this so that you're providing feedback to two boards.
Well, I, I see, you know, this is just a comment.
Yeah.
I think it's important to make.
Okay.
It's based on an observation of spending many meetings with the Conservation Commission and then just sitting here now for a half hour and listening to how this one went.
Yeah, and you were just on that 15 Lakeview Drive.
I've never reviewed that project. I've never seen the site plans.
Okay.
I happened to be sitting in on the meeting last week when it was reviewed by the Conservation Commission. But I've not done a review of that one at all.
Okay.
Really, uh, the Conservation Commission asked me a few questions, and I gave them some generic advice, not about that project, but just about principles, concepts. Um, but the Conservation Commission's, it's the easiest way to say this. The Planning Board and the Conservation Commission have really completely different regulatory authority.
Mm-hmm.
They happen to have it in geographical areas that overlap.
Mm-hmm.
And there are some nuances to both of them that make it seem as though you're regulating the same thing, but you're not. This is completely different than the Wetlands Protection Act. This is completely different than the Commission's bylaw. So, um, this often happens when you have, when you have big, complex multimedia projects. You sometimes have multiple towns involved, sometimes multiple state agencies and federal agencies. And if every one of those issuing bodies was worried about what one of the other ones was going to do, there, sure, there should be some coordination, but they need to be focusing on what their regulations are.
Mm-hmm.
And if that conflicts with, i- if the outcome that that review results in a conflict in the project because of another set of regulations, that's the applicant's, that's for the applicant to work out, right? For instance, say, um, say the Planning Board issues a special permit for a project because that project perfectly meets all the standards of the LPOD. But it doesn't, it doesn't happen to meet all the standards of the Wetlands Protection Act. The Conservation Commission has to deny at least that element of the project. That's not your fault, that's not your problem, that's not your fault.
So, yeah.
That means the applicant has to come back to you in order to satisfy both boards. They need to come back, they need to modify their plan so that they meet your standards and they meet the Conservation Commission's standards. And that's okay, that kind of thing happens all the time.
So, so the conservation wording in the LPOD is not, it's different from the Wetlands Protection Act? What they're doing at the conservation?
The Conservation Commission currently has a draft set of what are called performance standards to help implement the Wetlands bylaw.
Okay.
This is, this is its own baby, though.
Okay, all right, I was just kind of thinking that, that's helpful, thank you.
Standards are very different.
Okay, that's helpful.
Do they overlap in any way?
Well, the, the geographic extent overlaps, and there are some things that are very similar, but, um.
So can I ask your opinion about something, and you don't have to answer it? One thing we've talked about is the idea, and we had Town Council here at our last meeting talking about this idea of moving some of the Concom components, I mean, not Concom, Conservation Components of this bylaw to the Conservation Commission.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there are probably pros and cons to that.
Okay.
What are your thoughts?
I'm not comfortable sharing them, entire world.
Okay, right. I understand.
I, I just haven't gotten into this, but I want to know.
Yeah, no, that's.
Or admittedly sat in enough Conservation Commission hearings to see how they're implementing their bylaw.
Okay, that, that makes sense. Um, so this is very helpful. Um, does, do you guys have any questions you want to ask David while he's here?
So, is there a way to have, like, you, if we hired you, to help us? Um, for like, I'm looking at like, the erosion control, you know, like, okay, 10%. Is this slope 10%? I, I don't know how to tell that, you know, unless somebody teaches me how to do it. But it would. I don't want to go further.
There's actually, there are tools you can use in the field to measure stuff, yeah.
Oh, okay, for the average person.
Yep.
To be doing, really? Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, hopefully that answers that question.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Yeah.
Liz, did you have?
No, I was going to request a tool belt.
There you go.
With the, with the, with the tools that we need, we clearly.
Yes, there are specialized tools just for that application. And there's also tape measures and odds, so you, you can be done. It's not that complicated.
Is that something you can help us with?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Then we'd have to go on jobs.
We were also looking at, thinking about, you know, we were talking about David overseeing some of the things that we were looking at. You know, because we don't feel competent.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's why you're, yeah. Okay, Carl.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, David, you know, this is a tough one for you because I know your background, but, um.
This is John Hart from the Concom, okay.
One, one of the things I think that really needs to be addressed while you're doing your, your, your reviews of various different things is that Stockbridge has a particular character. And we at the Concom, and I hope we at the Planning Board, and we at the Board of Selectmen, and I'm speaking out of turn here, but, you know, hope to preserve that. Does any of this, the things that you present before us take that into consideration? That's all I have to say. Good evening.
I think I have a sense, John, of what that character is. But I'd really like to hear somebody express it from the town who's lived here a long time. I mean, I, I think, I think if I had to guess, there's a, a huge part of that character has to do with the stacks, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And so you, you, both the Commission and the Planning Board has provisions in their bylaws that, that allow those things to be taken into consideration. I think the challenge probably, um, the challenge with it is how do you implement that in practical terms and be equitable and fair to each applicant that comes in front of you? I think that's probably a challenge.
Well, that is the challenge. Um, that's. That's, that's before all of us. However, there are many who are some that wish that we just grow exponentially and turn into Stanford, Connecticut. And there are others that really like us to remain the town of Stockbridge, which seems like it's some miracle on Fifth Avenue or whatever the heck it is. Which I'd like to kind of maintain, I think Norman Rockwell kind of liked Stockbridge the way it was. I don't think that we should, let me, let me stop here and ask a question of the Planning Board. One member in particular. If Gary Johnson, John Stun, decided to sell his farm to a developer, what restrictions would the Planning Board have at its disposal presently to prevent some massive development from happening in those fields behind his farm? Question mark.
Subdivision by law.
Subdivision, yeah, very true.
Right.
So we have subdivision bylaw, John, and I think Gary is the only one on this board who has been through subdivision. But subdivision bylaw does have provisions for things like permeable surfaces for roads. And I think there's a cluster provision in there. But, you know, none of us have been through subdivision.
I mean, I mean, with the Johnson farm, there's historic reservation issues I think would need to be addressed. I think there's limitations that have been frequently overlooked in terms of length of driveways and access. You know, I mean, I mean, that's an interesting thought experiment, I think we need to do more of them.
Yeah, we've done, yes.
I mean, we're, we're, you know, especially around the ball, we're counting on, you know, Camp Mackinac and, and Tanglewood and, and, and Krapalu and, and people like, you know, Laurel Hill Association to protect a lot of the most valuable parts of the ball.
I mean, to a certain extent, we are protected by our zones, you know, we have the, when our zoning was introduced, it was introduced on what is sort of the principle of smart growth, it wasn't called that then. But I, you know, some of the folks who were very involved in our zoning bylaws were very influenced by Olmsted and the Green Necklace in Boston. And they were really looking at this idea of, you know, a focused downtown area and keeping the outskirts rural. And the zones reflect that, you know, you have a lot of, the town is R4 or R2. And then the zones, you know, where you have little villages like Glendale or Interlaken, you might have Resident Central, Residential Central, and then as you get into the downtown, you have Residential Central and, and One Acre Zoning, and then you get into the Business District. So to a certain degree, subdivision is tied to those zones. And my understanding of it is, is that has, you know, protects us in many ways. Does that make, does that make sense?
It makes, it makes sense. The problem is, is that when these things come before us, whether it's you at the Planning Board or us at the Concom, the applicant knows or intuits that we have no teeth, so they will just go forward with what they wish to do. 82 Interlaken is an example, in my opinion, my opinion. And, you know, should Gary Johnson want to sell his property? We would have all of the paperwork put before us and all of the excuses by the engineers and the property development people. And, you know, we, would we cave? Question mark? The question is, who's on what board when? We need to put provisions in place that make it so that it doesn't get caved in. That's all I'm saying, and we're not there yet.
Right, I agree, John, and that sort of gets to my thinking that potentially what makes sense for the Lake and Pond Overlay District is to take it out of the realm of a special permit. Boards just, you know, I've been on this board 10 years now, boards just do not like to say no. It's perhaps human nature. And it's not a, it's not a bad comment, it's just, you know, you're working with your neighbors. And so my thinking is to take it out of the realm of the special permit. And I have been told by a lawyer who used to come before this board that special permits were a dream for, for getting what you wanted because especially when things aren't clear, as they are not clear with our LPOD, that's an opening. So my thinking is to make it a cut and dried, I've talked to Tom Shuler, who is the Chair of the ZBA. I think we're in agreement on this. And one possible thing we talked about was working together on, on the, the LPOD to just make it a permit request that's very clear and cut and dried. And.
One more thing.
Yep.
The Concom. An applicant comes before us, puts plans on the table, we go to the site visit, we look at the plans and we look at the site and, you know, all is clear, we're talking to the engineer. We come up with a couple of things that might say, you need to do this, you need to do that. You know, he complies and all is fine and dandy, they put those plans before us. We approve the plan. We don't close the hearing, we don't close the hearing until there is an as-built in front of us, meaning the client has done the job, come take a look, do you like it? And we go and we look and we say we like it or we don't like it. But usually we like it because they know we're coming. The Planning Board doesn't seem to have any such thing when they issue a special permit. Issue a special, special permit to 82 Interlaken and they strip the hillside. I mean, that's, as I said to you in a text earlier today, that's as atrocious as Krapalu was when they took the scaffolding down when I was 13 years old sailing around on Stockbridge Bowl. I mean, what kind of conditions are you going to put on these people to say, you know, what's it going to look like after you're done? After the house is built, after the saltwater swimming pool is put in, after the construction driveway is no longer of any use? What are you gonna do? You don't have any, any consideration for that, as far as I know.
So they applied for that special permit, John, and they got it. So, I mean, look, they were approved and they got it. So that's, you know, at this point, they, once they had the special permit and, you know, they had a permit from the Select Board and the Conservation Commission, they can start. And at that point, in terms of the plans, my understanding is that the building inspector will review the property before issuing a certificate of occupancy. And I know the Concom has a different process, but I believe at our level, once they're approved, they're good to go for construction and then the building inspector, you know, checks it and issues that certificate of occupancy. In terms of enforcement, I'll make a note, we have enforcement capability for sure in our zoning bylaw. And, you know, I'll make a note to talk to Ned about that. And, you know.
The last time, when was the last time we ever actually enforced?
Yeah, in my, in my, during my time, never.
During my lifetime, never.
Gary?
There was one on the way, they had to tear it down and rebuild it, right?
So be it, you know? I mean, hey, David, I'm sorry to have interrupted and I'm gonna take leave right now and listen to you because I highly respect what you have to say.
No problem, John. Thanks on a couple of your questions.
All right, so, you know, thank you, John. David, did you have anything more to add? You've sort of heard some of the things that are on, on, you know, on some folks' minds, at least. Not everyone, but.
It just came up, enforcement. So if the various boards in town issue approvals and the project proponent carries out construction in accordance with the approvals, but it doesn't look like certain people envisioned it would look like, it really doesn't matter. The question the board should be asking is, is it in compliance? Or is it not in compliance? And if it's not in compliance, you've got a number of options. You can try to work with the project proponent. If there, if there are minor things, bring them back into compliance. That's usually the best way because most of the time they want to be cooperative. If they're not cooperative, then you've got to decide whether or not you want to take it to the next level. And you've got to decide, you've got to pick your battles too, right? Because if you, if you want to take a project proponent to the mat because they're out of compliance with something that might be procedural or administrative, but doesn't actually have a negative effect on the environment or whatever you're concerned with, and it's a big pain in the neck for them, and they're not necessarily going to comply, now you look like a paper tiger, right? So there are so many different things to consider when it comes to enforcement. But if, if, if there's a violation that's been committed and it's egregious and it's obvious and there's no dispute about it, and you're trying to work with a project proponent and they're either ignoring you or they're dragging their feet or it becomes protracted and you're not seeing any progress, why would they voluntarily come back into compliance unless you take it to the next level and issue an enforcement order and start considering fines? I don't know, you've got a, the ability to levy fines with your zoning bylaw.
We do.
But, I mean, that's what those, that's what they're there for. I have a lot of enforcement experience. I, I prosecuted sometimes with the help or, or me helping. I was a technical lead, but cases prosecuted by the Attorney General's Office for huge, huge egregious violations. And I've also dealt with enforcement on small, single-family house issues too, so it's, it's not easy. Enforcement is arguably the toughest part of this entire process. But, yeah, and it's, and it's also awkward when you happen to live in the same town as the people you're taking enforcement against. So I get that, too.
Do you find engineers are on the whole, well, like, we have some engineers that will come and they'll list all of our bylaws and then say how they met that bylaw or they plan to meet that bylaw. Do you find in general that that's a truthful thing that they're saying? Or they're just saying that so they can get their permit? In general, you know?
In general, I think when an engineer or a consultant actually goes through the trouble to highlight specifically what they're doing within your jurisdiction, they evidently know what the provisions are and they take a shot at describing how they're in compliance, that's a good sign. Now, it doesn't mean they're right necessarily, but the fact that they're going through that process is helpful. It's up to you guys to know your regulations well enough to say, no, that's just not true, or, yeah, they didn't.
I mean, does the contractor have to, you know, like, we've got the engineer and then someone hires the contractor? I don't know who would hire a contractor, but the contractor has to go along with what the engineer says, correct?
Well, the contractor is, okay.
I don't know how that works.
The way it's supposed to work is when, the way it's supposed to work is when a project needs to go to construction or when the project's about to go to construction, the project proponent or the project proponent's engineer or a project manager prepares a bid package. Right, it's a construction bid package. And that bid package should have all the land use approvals in it so that the contractors bidding on that project know the confines within which they can work.
Okay.
So they are, they are the ones who are actually, you know, they're equally up generally, depending on the permits are written, they're equally on the hook if they don't comply. So the property owners on the hook and the contractors on the hook. So it's incumbent upon the contractor to have copies of those permits, know them inside out, ask questions if they don't understand specific provisions. But they're on the hook for, for building those things in accordance with the permits.
David, oftentimes we have found in the Concom that a project comes before us, say, December 2021, and it doesn't have, nothing, no contractor, you know, no builder, no anything. And we go and look at the site and with the engineer and we're under the understanding that everything's going to be complied with and we sign off on it. And I have been banging on the can for a long time that there be a signature put on the plans by the contractor that he has read them and what is standing in the way of that? So that we can hold the contractor as well as the engineer, as well as the homeowner accountable for things that they do that they should not do? I'm sorry, I couldn't help but come back.
There's, there's nothing, there's nothing precluding, let's talk about, so we use the Conservation Commission as an example. There's nothing precluding the Conservation Commission from including a special condition in every single order of conditions that has some one-page form associated with it that says that no work shall occur until all these parties acknowledge and sign this form. There's nothing precluding the Concom from doing that. And if, if you issue an order of conditions with a special condition like that and it doesn't get appealed because of that condition, and I don't, I don't think most contractors or engineers would have, would have a problem with that type of condition. But then you've got it and you've got that record. And I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
So like when we have a special permit process, once we close the public hearing, the board deliberates, that's it, they're done, they can no longer speak. And we can then issue conditions. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, this one other comment I want to make for both John and the Planning Board. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure this gets acknowledged or noticed by people who haven't been on that side of the table, right? So I've done both, I've been a consultant and I've been a regulator. I've been a consultant for much longer and worked with engineers for much longer than I was a regulator. I was a regulator for a seven-year period. What engineers and consultants want is they want some, they want to know that if they're playing by the rules, there's some certainty at the end of the process. Right?
That's exactly what I said at the last meeting.
And my, going back to what I said earlier about like, when I come into the middle of a project, I can often sit back and go, oh my God, well, I can see where this is going to go, I can see the train's going to go off the tracks there. And if everyone just did that, this would be great for everybody. It would be great for the, for the project proponent, it'd be great for the board. They just, they're just not seeing it, they don't see this pathway. If you can take the mystery out of your provisions and give applicants and engineers a clear pathway to get where they want to go, they'll do it.
Right, so we.
Do it.
We just need to make it clear and that's the problem, it's not, yeah, okay.
But it also, you know, there's a, there's a.
A lot of case-by-case stuff that goes on here, you know, and that's the other problem. I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm not entirely certain that, you know, there's a, there's, there's, there's a design in place for any community, let alone, let alone Stockbridge that, you know, can just, can just, can just, you know, offer, offer, offer quite, quite that clarity. On the other hand, I would welcome less discussion. I'm afraid I have to apologize, I've got to leave, I have another meeting. But it's very nice to talk to you, it's really important to hear your ideas and, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carl. Carl, so can, before you go, you know, we want to arrive at a decision here tonight in terms of working with David or not, can you just give me your input?
Oh, I'd vote, I'd vote in favor.
Okay, thank you, okay, bye-bye, enjoy your evening. Okay, any other questions or is everyone getting ready to wrap it up? Any other questions or is everyone getting ready to wrap it up? I see some tired faces.
Did you think, did you find most of our bylaws tangled, I mean, you know, the LPOD tangled that, where you could see where someone would get into the weeds and say, okay, I'm going to write this, but I'm really going to do this. And not specifically, but.
I'm not going to give you specifics, I'm just going to show you what I did. Just look for the red or the, really the pink. I made notes on every single page. See a lot of question marks here and there, two, underline question marks. I think the elements of it are crystal clear, very effective. I think there are other places where I said, such as.
Yeah.
What does this actually mean?
Are there some that would be outdated? Do they get?
I didn't see anything that I would characterize as outdated, but I would, I saw things where, there's no definitions section to this. There's like one definition, I think, right? If, it's very difficult to come to consensus on terms if there's no definitions section.
They're at the beginning, like, we just did a signed bylaw and we moved, we repeated all the definitions right before the bylaw, and I was thinking we would probably want to do that with this bylaw too.
I'll just give you one example because I don't think it's controversial at all.
I gave up on G.
I'll punch you.
I thought it was a very important one, actually. Okay. So 6.5.9 Land Use in Olmsted, Subpart B, Erosion and Sedimentation Control. The very first bullet says, "Natural vegetation shall be maintained." What's natural? Does that mean?
Anything that's there.
Not plastic? Does that mean, does that mean native species? Does that mean some composition of woody native species versus herbaceous species? I think, I think, I understand what the intent was with that word, but that word could be really explored.
Right.
If someone wanted to. They could say, well, we're sure we're planting, bittersweet example, not bittersweet necessarily, but something that's not native, but, I'm sorry, something that's not invasive, something that you, you probably don't want to see down around Stockbridge Falls.
Right. Yeah.
But it happens to be natural. Well, if they plant it, they're in compliance with your.
Yeah.
Standards.
Yeah.
Right? Unless you define natural to mean native to Berkshire County or something like that, right?
That's helpful. Okay. Anything else?
You have gone through this and what redlined parts that you thought were ambiguous? Is that what you were saying?
That I had questions about or I, or was wondering how is this to be implemented in practical terms? Yeah.
So it's something we should look at in terms of how it's worded or what we really mean by that?
Yeah, I think there are different places we could. That's not something I'd propose in front of half.
Yeah, right.
I just wanted.
But you didn't make one for us. That's just yours.
These are just my notes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't actually work.
That's perfect.
I think we have to vote on that.
But that's what we need, is somebody like you from the outside to kind of look at this. We even read it all the time and, you know, we kind of have our idea what it means, but for somebody else to look at it, that's great.
Yeah. And it's.
Yeah, no, we need, we need more expertise at the table. So, all right. Okay, so unless there's anything else, I think we are all set. And I'd like to make a motion that we work with David on the, you know, as, as, on a case, you know, as needed basis to help us out with, with conservation and, and, and the bylaw work that we do.
Second.
Hi, Kate.
Hi, Gary.
Hi, Liz.
Hi, Marie.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi, Carol from afar.
Can you vote?
Do you want to do this?
I don't want to vote.
So unless there's anything, I think we're all set. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Hi, Kate.
Hi, Gary.
Hi, Liz.
Hi, Marie.
Hi, Nancy.